Welcome Commissioner.
Well, thank you, and I really appreciate all of you coming out and volunteering your time because I know it takes a lot of effort, so, thank you so much. And I hope we have a common understanding that hopefully we would agree that whether we're city or county level, we advocate for the best possible outcomes for the citizens we represent. And I think we'd agree that responsible elected officials try to make decisions that are in the best interests of the people they serve. They are interested in looking at the facts from responsible reputable sources before making those decisions, and they try to keep personal interests and bias out of any decision-making process. Okay, I'm here advocating for a hospital slash emergency room for Brookings, and I'd like to give you just a little bit of history because I think history is important. After the CHD annexation failed in 2015, the South Curry Health Alliance was formed to see what healthcare options were available to South Curry residents. After many hours, and actually months, of research, they found this: "An acute care hospital is legal in the Port District but not viable." That would probably cause both Sutter and Curry General to go out of business. CMS regulations, as verified by Region 10, allow a critical access satellite hospital combined with a combined total of 25 beds. They frown upon standalone emergency rooms because of increases in costs and patient risks. And I'm going to give each one of you a packet before I leave today, and in that packet is a piece of paper from CMS kind of outlining their rules, and I've highlighted the place where they allow to have satellite hospitals. And I really don't think, at the time the standalone emergency room was put in, people didn't really realize that a hospital was also possible. Because I think if that had happened, we would have fought for a hospital. And I have to tell you that we had to do lots of research before we came up with that possibility. So I'm not blaming anybody, definitely. The members of the South Curry Healthcare Alliance met with federal representatives in 2016, and then met with Ginny Razzo in May 17, 2017, and Alex Campbell in June of 2017, to discuss and explore steps in moving forward. Curry County Commissioners sorted, or supported and participated in a forum in August 2017 that was sponsored by South Curry Healthcare Alliance to educate the public and local governmental entities about possible options and allow them to ask questions of the panel, and over 100 people attended that forum. Recently, I attended a meeting up in Portland, that was December 17th, with Governor, the Governor's Representative Holly Hyberg, she's kind of over all the healthcare, Bobby Green, who is the Governor's Representative for Oregon Health, OHA, excuse me, and Lilian Shirley, who's over all of public health, and Dana Sullivan, who is in charge of giving out, going over all the rules and giving out licenses for various entities. And here are the outcomes that happened as a result of that meeting. We found out that it's possible to have a satellite hospital with an emergency room in Brookings. The services at the CHN clinic in Brookings are and have been billed as critical access hospital services under Curry General's license. I guess the big question is, is this feasible? Would it work here in Brookings? And we can't know this without a feasibility study. And I think we should probably start with the basics, just find out what the estimated cost would be to retrofit or redesign the current medical, Curry Medical Clinic to a hospital and ER. And after that, I think what we could do is have an advisory on the ballot, an advisory measure, so that the people in South Curry could say, would we support this financially or not? Why go to a whole lot of expense for an expanded feasibility before we don't know whether the people are going to support this? I don't think that Curry Health District should pay for this, I really don't. I think South Curry residents, if they're interested enough, would help pay for this in one form or another, whether it be a bond issue or whatever we come up with. Personally, I would like to see a bond issue, but I'm not going to say that that's what would happen. Bobby Green, who is the representative from Oregon Health Authority, said this: "We must remain focused on the desired outcome, which is to ensure that we meet the triple aim: better health, better care, and lower costs. Our primary goal is to provide quality healthcare that serves all Oregonians." And I think this is really important, and I think all of you would agree with me on that statement, and also Bobby. On January 12th, I had a meeting with David Brock Smith, and here's what came of that meeting. "We both agreed that it was important to work together towards getting the best possible healthcare options for South Curry County. We also agreed that a feasibility study was necessary to determine the fiscal and optimal healthcare ramifications for both CHN and South Curry residents. I agreed to determine the projected costs of a feasibility study, which I am working on presently. David agreed to help find a funding source for a feasibility study and assist in getting an OAR for this project if necessary, just like there was an OAR, which is an Oregon administrative rule, that was put in place to have a standalone emergency room." And I wouldn't mind if the City of Brookings helped a little bit with that feasibility study, if we got to that point. Then I had a meeting with Ginny Razzo on January 17th, and the outcomes of that were: Ginny indicated that their board is pushing to get a standalone ER implemented in the Brookings facility as soon as possible, and that CHN is currently working for funding on this project. She said that her board would probably not be interested in having a feasibility study before the standalone ER is built. I reiterated at that time that CMS frowns on standalone ERs because there is more cost and more patient risk. Their CFO has done a financial analysis of a standalone emergency room, and he thought it would be beneficial financially for CHN. I think that it would be more financially beneficial for CHN and the city if a satellite hospital and ER were implemented and paid for by South Curry residents. That's just my thing, but I don't think we would know that without a feasibility study. There's just no way we can predict that. Ginny also voiced some concerns about a feasibility study taking up extra staff time and getting board approval. It should be noted that 53% of patient care revenue currently comes from South Curry, or 97415. If the feasibility study was limited in scope, that means just find out what the construction costs would be, there would be less staff time involved. One would hope that a governmental health agency licensed specifically to serve rural and remote areas would want to expand and improve those services. Then I met on January 18th, I've been meeting all over the place, with Janelle Howard, and I've got to say, she was very amenable and listened. I like Janelle, so, thank you for meeting with me. And some of the outcomes we came out with, we discussed the 2004 Asante feasibility study. And that was a study that was done by Asante to determine what the costs and so forth would be for a hospital here. And this study indicated that a critical access hospital with eight to 10 beds and 34,000 square feet would be feasible in Brookings. Of course, Brookings has grown since that time. The Curry Medical Clinic, CMC, has 34,500 square feet. And I don't know whether you have a memory as long as I do, but at that time, we were first told that this facility was going to be a hospital. That was Bill McMillan, I believe, who was the CEO at that time. That's what he was telling people, I attended a meeting where he said that. We both agreed that a feasibility study is needed and should be done by a neutral entity to determine if a hospital or, and ER is a viable option for Brookings. We also agreed that economic growth in Brookings and Curry County depends on good healthcare and good schools. I had to put "schools" in there. And I think most studies indicate that. I know, all of you know, people who move from this area simply because they don't have the necessary healthcare that they need. And I bet, just about, if I had people raise hands, just about everybody would raise their hand. Then I've had some interactions with Gary Milliman, and he's been very helpful. Gary had some good suggestions, and I'm not going to get into all the details, for moving forward on this project. And he suggested that we define the boundaries of the taxing district. Okay, when the vote came up for the annexation, they used the Port District, I verified this with the tax assessor, to, for the voting. So, also, the Library District is exactly the same. When I talked to Janelle, she says, isn't the Library District the same? And she was right, because I verified that with the tax assessor also. And then his second point was, OHA and CMS, has OHA and CMS had any other regulatory agencies signed off on converting Curry Medical Center to a satellite hospital? I would have to say not at this time, but it certainly is possible to get there, and he has asked me to be part of a conference call, he's working with someone, on possibly coming up with a feasibility study. Also, support from the county, CHN, and the City of Brookings will be necessary, and that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, is to get your support. Gary also contacted individuals at Portland State University regarding a feasibility study, and they determined the following, and I have to tell you, I'm abbreviating a lot of this, thank goodness for you. The study should be in two phases. Phase one would be a regulatory review to identify any obstacles with regulatory agencies, that would be OHA and CMS, and develop a strategy to overcome these obstacles. They estimate the cost would be between $10,000 and $15,000, and that would require 60 to 90 days to complete. Phase two would be a more comprehensive study. And I think in between those two studies, well, the first study definitely should include construction costs, but in between those two studies, I think we need to have an advise, a vote of the people to see whether they would be willing to support a hospital here. So then the next thing I thought about, what questions would you want answered by a full feasibility study? Well, those questions would be, how would a satellite hospital emergency room affect Curry General Hospital and CHN and Sutter Coast Hospital? What are the risks and benefits for each entity? Second, would it have positive financial impacts for Brookings and South Curry County and for CHN? I think that would be really important to know. How would the Brookings Clinic be affected? Would they need more space? How would the feasibility study be paid for? And just to let you know, I'm working on that, but I hope that Brookings might be able to help in that a little bit. If the study determined that a satellite hospital and ER would benefit CHN and Brookings, South Curry County, where would the funds come from to build it? And I maintain that the people in this area should pay for it. I would be willing to step up to the plate and do that. And I've got to tell you, I'm definitely a fiscal conservative, and I don't always vote yes and don't always agree with every tax that's put on. Would this be in the best interest of the Curry Health District or its primary revenue source, which is South Curry County? All of these questions, I think, could be answered, and that would be a pretty complete study. Now, my next question would be, and to you, why would the City Council be incentivized, incentivized to endorse a hospital and ER? And these are the concerns that you might want to address. First, would it be possible for South Curry residents to receive better healthcare with less risks and lower costs, including insurance, at least equitable to Gold Beach? Second, would Brookings have more economic growth as a result of a hospital and ER located in the city? I know for a fact that some industries will not move to an area where there is not adequate Would more residents stay in Brookings rather than moving as a result of needed healthcare options? Why should the Brookings residents accept less, that's just a standalone emergency room, when they could have more, a satellite hospital with an ER? Why should we accept less when we could have more? Here's what I'm asking of the board today. I would like you to consider a resolution that would include endorsing a limited feasibility study for a satellite hospital and ER in Brookings to determine the construction costs of a satellite critical access hospital and ER, and two, I would like you to support accessing the best possible healthcare options for the people in Brookings, and three, I would like to see the recognition of the need for South Curry residents to pay for the construction costs of a hospital and ER in Brookings. I would also like to see support for an advisory measure to be put on the ballot to determine if the voters are willing to financially support a hospital and ER in Brookings. I even went to the trouble of coming up with a sample resolution. Would you like to hear that? I can see your eyes are glazing, or are you getting excited?
[laughter]
Excited, okay, good. Okay, I even got into the "whereas's" and the "wherefore's" and all that good stuff. Okay, so here's a sample resolution, and I'm going to give each one of you a packet so you can look at this stuff, think about it, I think it's important to verify the information. Whereas, the Brookings City Council is interested in the best available healthcare for all citizens of Brookings. Two, economic development is dependent on adequate and equitable healthcare options. Three, the City of Brookings is the largest city in Oregon without a hospital. That should be incentive. Four, CMS Region 10 allows a satellite critical access hospital and an emergency room. Five, CMS has documented that they frown upon freestanding standalone, or standalone emergency rooms because of significantly increased costs and patient risks. Six, a satellite critical access hospital and ER will significantly increase employment opportunities, expand available healthcare services, and reduce millions of dollars expended for medical services provided to our residents outside of our county. Are you aware of how much money goes outside of our county for medical services? It's about $70 million. Would it be nice to have some of that stay here? And I added a seven, I didn't have it on the packet because of why I was driving today. And I think most of you are aware of what happened to Highway 101. This morning, it was like this, this afternoon, it was like this. I didn't drive 101, so it was between one and a half to two feet drop. So, seven, the roads between Brookings and Gold Beach are not always stable, and I think that's a fact, especially in the wintertime. Then we get to the "be it resolved" that. "The Brookings City Council supports a limited feasibility study to determine the estimated costs of constructing and remodeling the existing Curry Medical Center in Brookings to comply with critical access hospital licensing requirements, and an advisory ballot measure to determine if the citizens of 97415 would financially support the costs of this project." I think if the people vote and they're not interested in financially supporting a hospital, then we could just end this debate right now. So anyway, I am going to give you a copy. This is the CM regulations that I was talking about, and I highlighted it for you, but I'll give each one of you a copy of this so you can digest it. Does anybody have any questions right now that you have?
I do.
Bill?
What do you think the cost of the feasibility study is going to be?
Well, Gary said that a limited, he was talking to someone at Portland State, a limited feasibility would be $10,000 to $15,000. Okay, that's just the beginning, and I think we have to have the beginning. If we're going to put an advisory question on the ballot, it only makes sense that the people know about what the cost is. Otherwise, you know, it wouldn't make any sense. I wouldn't vote for anything that I didn't know it was all about. Anybody else have some questions? I thought I saw a hand.
Counselor Hamilton, are you concluded?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The very first paragraph, you said that if we have an emergency room here, that it would put the one out of business in Gold Beach and the one in.
No, 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 if we had an acute care hospital, I don't know if you know the difference between acute care and critical access, do you know that difference?
We've spent a lot of time on this.
Oh, have you? Okay, good. Okay, so if you were to have an acute care hospital, that would be in addition to Curry General and Sutter, that's possible by the rules, I doubt that it could be licensed, but it could be in the Port District.
It's possible to have.
It's possible, but is it?
That distance?
What was that? Acute care doesn't have to have distances, there's no specific distances, but critical access has to be within 35 miles. You can't build two critical access hospitals within, but you can have a satellite that is within that distance. But on the satellite, what has to happen is you could only have a total of 25 beds. And I believe the current census of the Curry General is seven beds right now. They have, I believe, 17 beds, or you correct me if I'm wrong? Oh, 18, okay, I'm wrong. I was off by one. But, you can only have a total of 25 between the two. Anybody have any other questions? Wrong.
In your first statement, you said CMS, let me change my note here, CMS would allow us a satellite hospital?
Yes.
Okay, so satellite to?
It would be to Curry General.
Curry General, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And, okay, and up to eight beds, you said something to that.
No, it could be up to 25 beds, but the feasibility study that they did originally here was eight to 10 beds, that's what they said, Asante's study, but between the two hospitals, that's the 25 beds.
Total 25, so.
Exactly.
So what Gold Beach doesn't have, we could pick up, or vice versa?
Exactly.
So, and that's kind of what we talked about earlier, if we did something like that.
Yeah, you've got to work together. That's the only way it's going to happen.
Total 25 beds between the two facilities.
Between the two facilities, exactly. Any other questions?
And you mentioned construction costs, so you're adding, you're talking about adding to this facility that's here in Brookings?
Exactly.
Or a new building?
No, 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 it would be adding, adding to this because they already have 34,500 square feet.
That's big enough.
Yeah. But Ginny indicated that they may have to do some expansion for their clinic, and I'm not sure how that would work out, we wouldn't know without a feasibility study.
And I'd like to make one correction. Bill McMillan did not tell the public in Southern Curry that he was building a hospital.
Actually?
He said he was building a facility to hospital standards.
Well, I got to tell you, I s-
He was pretty careful about what he said.
I sat in a meeting, that he actually said that.
You know, I'll tell you the truth, that it was understood that they were building a hospital.
Mm-hmm.
If you go back and check it out, and I did several times.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Bill McMillan actually said he was building that facility to hospital standards.
Okay, maybe.
So maybe he slipped up once or twice.
Yeah, that's possible.
But he was pretty careful about what he was saying.
Okay.
And I do believe that that facility is already set up to hospital standards, so.
Ginny indicated that maybe when it was built, it was set up to hospital standards, but it might not be to hospital standards now, and that's one, another reason for a feasibility study, because it needs to be with current hospital standards. Any other questions? You guys are great. I love questions.
Your position paper, as far as the feasibility between $10,000 and $15,000 for that to occur, how would you, do you address how you would split that responsibility up between citizens of Brookings and citizens of the county?
Okay, let me tell you what I'm working on right now. David Brock Smith said he would help me find the resources to do that.
Okay.
But I would hope that maybe Brookings could kick in a little, and we could get resources other places too. I have an email, I can't even remember the guy's name, from All Care, who's one of the big wigs there that might be willing to, Josh, you're right, to help with that.
Okay.
So, but I need to get buy-in from various organizations before we even move forward with that. So, I think this would be really, really exciting if we could get this here in Brookings.
Is a ballot sampling legal in Oregon?
It is.
It is. So you're going to put it on the ballot?
Let me explain that, let me explain it just a little bit more. The county has to have an ordinance that allows that, and we happen to have an ordinance that allows that, the county does. In fact, they're going to be putting on the next ballot, something about a consumption tax. Yeah, so, anyway, other questions?
You done?
Yes.
Done? Okay, well, you, our process is kind of the same as your guys' at the county, I would imagine.
You probably have to think about it.
We'll go through the packet, and I would imagine, assuming there's interest, which I'm sure there will be, we'll have a workshop.
Okay.
Invite you to a workshop.
And let me, I'll let you have these packets, I made them up.
Yeah, hand those to our deputy.
I didn't want to change it, because she's a good kid. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So oral requests and communications from the audience, I've got, I'll do the two for Sue Gold, for the critical access hospital first, I got Maggie Runyon. And Maggie, if you'd just state your name and address again, on the, in the mic.
Maggie Runyon, you want an address, P.O. Box 6537, Brookings, Oregon, I live in Harbor. And, this is a little story, kind of. Sometime ago, and I don't know how long ago, I started wheezing whenever I had to move around, get up off of a chair, and I didn't notice it. Around Christmas time, my son came to visit, and he mentioned that he, I was really wheezing bad then at times. January 30th, I went to see my doctor, and I was, got out of the car, and he's, his office is down some stairs, and I came down those stairs, and when I came in to see him, the first thing he did was put me on oxygen and started all sorts of tests. This is where the tests come in, and this is why this has to do with the hospital. Before this, my hospital of choice has always been Sutter because it's a nice straight drive down there, many times I've had to go there to, for different things, and I was in there for, I've got to stop and catch my breath. I was in there for food poisoning for a week, and, so I've been there, in and out of that hospital. My main reason for not going up to Gold Beach, and it cost me more because my insurance company was Regions Blue Cross of Oregon, and California's out of, out of network. So anyhow, the doctor started all sorts of tests. I've had poop tests, I've had a four-hour stress test, the day, the next day, that was on the 14th of this month, among a echocardiogram, chest x, heart x-rays, and so on and so forth. On the 14th, I had a stress test. I was supposed to have a respiratory test up at Gold Beach on the 15th, that was Friday. I don't know if you remember Friday the 15th, but there was terrible storm. My work ethic, when I, work thing when I was growing up, or not growing up, but getting my money as I was an adult, I worked 15 years for armored transport, driving day and night into all kinds of weather, because we drove for the banks, et cetera. Then I worked 15 years for Riverside County, the same type of thing as a courier, day and night, in fact, as most of my times were from midnight until 10:00 in the morning, all kinds of weather, so I don't mind driving, I love to drive. I love to drive. But I was not going to drive that storm on the 15th to Gold Beach for the respiratory test, even though it was very important. I called the lady and told her I couldn't make it, and she said she understood, rescheduled me for this coming Friday, March 1st. Will I make it on March 1st? I don't know. I hear the roads out. So Sunday, on the 24th, my son and I do missionary, gospel, we help at the prison with, as volunteers with the prisoners in Level One with their Protestant services. And, you know, it's a pretty bad storm on Sunday night, and I could have opted out, but it's a clear shot down there to Pelican Bay and back. Now, if Pelican Bay had been in Gold Beach, I wouldn't have gone. But the prisoners, they like us to come, and we have more, when it's a continuing thing, we have more, more people come because they get to know us. So I went Sunday. I'm not afraid of a storm, but today was a pretty bad day, and I guess we had some bad weather with 101. Now, March 1st, am I going to be able to make it? I'm supposed to go up there. And I have some others. I have coming up, let's see, I have colonoscopy up and a colonos, whatever they have going down, checking to see if there's something else going on. I don't know, but the doctor wants to find out what it is as soon as possible. But a lot of this has to do with the weather and getting to the people that are going to check me out, and if I have to fight to get to Gold Beach, this doesn't work very good. Now, I suppose I'll live and make it, but my son, he's going to retire, and he has his job, he can work out of his home, and he's wanting to locate now. And he was wanting to come to Brookings at one time, but he said, Mom, I'm not moving to Brookings because there's no health stuff. You don't have anything for you. And he says, I want you to get out of there now. We don't want to leave Brookings. We love it here. But this is what we're going to have to do if we, I don't know what we'll do, because if we don't have a hospital here, and this is getting, I mean, 84, by the way, so I'm not a young chick anymore. I'm not growing any younger. 16 years and I'll be 100. Will I make it? Hope so.
Thank you. Thank you. Next. Catherine Wiley?
Thank you, and I really appreciate this opportunity. I am the chair.
I'm sorry, Catherine, could I have you say your name?
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I should have known the routine. Catherine Wiley, 96370, Dooley Creek Road, Brookings, Oregon. I am the chair of the South Curry Healthcare Alliance, and it seems to be a rather serendipitous evening when we're talking about not only Highway 101 being out, but a civility proclamation. I want to assure you that none of us who have been involved in the South Curry Healthcare Alliance have ever sought or desired to have an adversarial relationship. All of us have been working hundreds of hours voluntarily, spending a great deal of time and money and resources in just simply looking at what the potential options are, the optimal options for our community. And I know that we don't have a vote, most of us from Harbor going up to Pistol River, on who is representing us here, but we are vested in the city of Brookings. We pay taxes for the schools, we pay taxes for the library, we pay taxes for the cemetery, and we need your investment back in what's best for all of us, not just the 6,500 people who elected you. You are really representing over two-thirds of this county in whatever you decide to do here. If an emergency room standalone were the only feasible option, I think everybody would buy in, but it's not. We can have what would be best, safest for our community and for these citizens, and, you know, as the primary patient care revenue for Curry Health Network, it should be a significant factor to me for any governmental entity, which the Curry Health District is and which the city of Brookings is, to advocate for what's best for the citizens of the community. Many of the individuals who've been involved, Maggie was one, who've been involved in the South Curry Healthcare Alliance, honestly, we've already lost one member who died this past year. One of our members is 92 years old and can't travel at night. She happens to own the lighthouse over the Best Western. So there are people who are fully aware that they won't even be alive if this comes to fruition, but they worked for years and staunchly supported the efforts for what is best for our community, for what our county, and for all the citizens here. And I would hope, when you talk about, you know, what the cost of a feasibility study is, this city spent over $50,000 in a feasibility study to see about annexing Harbor. This city spent over $100,000 for attorneys and lobbyists to develop the administrative rule for a freestanding emergency room. And it's not a criticism. I think you were thinking you were doing the best of what you could do at the time of what you were presented with what was an option. But now that we know and we have, and just to reiterate, CMS is the Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services. The majority of revenue from our entire county is Medicare Medicaid. The entire purpose of Critical Access Hospital is to serve areas exactly like ours, which aside from when a tsunami comes or the earthquake comes or whatever, every time there's a road out, we can't get there. Port Orford can't get there. We need something here for the majority of our county, and I sincerely hope that we can work together towards successful efforts in this regard. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah? Would you like? Ginny, would you mind, would you like to comment on anything with the hospital that was spoken about this evening? Counselor Edenskog just asked me if I'd give you the chance.
No, I, my name is Ginny Razzo, and I'm not from Brookings, or if you need my address, but I'm really here just to answer any questions and to be here on behalf of the district. I think it's wise for us to fully participate so that if there are questions, we don't get misinformation out there or anything of the like. So I really am not prepared to present anything to or from tonight's discussion.
Do you have any questions for?
The proposal tonight is if we formed a South County District, tax district for hospital, healthcare purposes.
That wasn't the proposal, just that South County would help pay for this, would pay for a hospital. That doesn't necessarily mean a district.
An additional district.
An additional district. It could mean a bond issue. That's a possibility.
How are you going to collect the taxes?
You could go through either the library district or the Port District and have that be a pass through, just like the county collects taxes or.
So it wouldn't be an additional tax district, it's just adding on taxes to an existing district?
Yeah, you would get extra tax through that district, but they would have to pass that.
Nevertheless, we're going to bank some money up, so let me get back to my question. If South County then banks up some money, I guess that that money then would approach CHN and ask them, would you operate a hospital, a satellite hospital in Brookings? That would be the question that would come out of that. And at that point in time, you don't have to answer this now, but if we have workshops in the future, I could see this question coming up. Is CHN board going to be willing to take on a contract for that money to operate a satellite hospital here?
Those are a lot of the questions we will have to get through. They are, they're great questions, and I can't speak on behalf of the board. What I can tell you is Curry Health Networks Board of Directors listened to the proposal that Ms. Gold presented, and at their last board meeting in open session, requested that the CFO and myself actually bring forward some proposals for a full study. I appreciated Gary McMillan, sorry, McMillan, is it? Milliman, thank you.
I know.
Gary Milliman did reach out to Oregon State University, and much like we were thinking, we've got the legislative hurdles to first evaluate before you spend a lot of additional money on a full feasibility study. And so I was pleased that Gary was assisting to find resources potentially, and I think their approach is right. The only difference I would say is that without a full feasibility study, how do you know what construction costs to put into an advisory vote? I guess you could say eight to 10 beds, but if a feasibility study came back to say it's four beds, or 12 beds, or 16 beds, these are all speculative numbers that are being thrown out. They certainly are not coming from Curry Health Network. I do understand they're coming from a feasibility study that was done in 2004, but I would mention to you that the landscape of healthcare in 2004 in all of Curry County was very, very different. We didn't have a brand-new building in Gold Beach. This hospital didn't have the debt of that building or Fifth Street Clinic. So there's a lot that needs to be taken into consideration. I also did reach out, and I think it's important, and we can get into this in further workshops, but I reached out to a gentleman at the Oregon Health Authority. I don't remember his name, I can get that for you. I wanted to understand the certificate of need process here in Oregon. I've come from California, they didn't have that. Basically, what he indicated was that before you would apply for a certificate of need, which is about a year-long process just in and of itself, you would need to answer three questions, and the entity looking to place new services down here, of which inpatient beds would require certificate of need, we would need, the burden of proof would be on Curry Health District in this situation, three very important questions. The first is, is there a demand? And they explained to me they would look at that purely at the numbers of how many beds does Sutter have, what's their average daily census, how many beds does Gold Beach have, what's its, and is there a demand sufficient that would support a facility? The second would be financially. Is it financially feasible? We're all interested in that. But the third was very interesting. They said that they would reach out to both Curry Health Network and Sutter Coast to determine how this new service line would potentially impact the existing infrastructure in healthcare, and if it was determined that would be adversarial in any way, Oregon Health Authority would take that into serious consideration for the certificate of need. So this is, this is not something that happens overnight, you know? Let's just be clear about that. A feasibility study is the first step to all this, but there's a lot of other questions out there, so.
Helped me with my memory, but we discussed putting the emergency room in Brookings, what, four years ago or so, put it out on a ballot. The emergency room would come with, I recall, four to eight beds were discussed. I think five was the optimal number that would be, allow for 24 hours. So if you came, you know, I'm not a medical expert at all, so let me speak in simple language. If you came to the emergency room and had to be held for observations, there would be beds available for 24-hour observations.
We are looking at that, Ron. It's a good question. The facility currently as it stands, what we're really aiming for is a staging location by which if somebody needed to be observed for 24, up to 48 hours, an observation is not guaranteed to end at 24 hours. It can go up to 48 hours. The challenge we have with putting observation beds here at CMC is that the facility is not equipped to handle patients on an ongoing basis. We don't have a facility for kitchen, we don't have a laundry facility here, and quite frankly, we don't have the space without doing some significant remodels to accommodate an observation overnight stay. And I know that that was in discussion, and I know that there was discussion early on about expanding the building, either out towards Fifth Street or back into that parking lot, that would accommodate that space. We still have those drawings, and again, maybe that's something we need to consider in the future, but right now, our understanding is that with Cal-War's assistance, if you're identified as needing admission or an observation stay, you would be transported up to Gold Beach at no additional expense to the individual.
I remember that. Actually, to your choice, if you chose to go to Sutter.
If you chose to go to Sutter.
Yeah, I remember that. So this building, the facility we have in Brookings right now, CMC you call it, we know it as.
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street Clinic or Urgent Care. In Gold Beach, they have different language than we have in Brookings, being Southerners. This building is, would have to have addition to it then in order to have beds, is what you're telling us.
Yes. I believe that. I will tell you, we, I just got off the phone this morning with the architect that initially drew up the expansion plans. We really want to fully understand how to optimize that space for a freestanding emergency room, and we want to understand how to best utilize that space. So we're commissioning some work that he's going to do with our staff to really identify exactly what we could do without tearing down walls or without doing any construction, and then kind of taking a phased approach. So if we wanted to do this in addition, where, how, what would that look like? What would an estimated cost projection be? So stepping that out very carefully so that we know exactly what we are, when we seek funds, we know what we're asking for, and we can be well-informed and informed those that live here that this level of a funding will afford us the ability to do A, B, and C. This level, not so much.
I got many more questions, but.
I'm sure you would.
As Mayor indicated, that probably, we'll run this through our process, which would probably include workshops and gathering more information and things of that nature.
And just so you know, we are in the process of identifying firms. The help of Gary was very, very helpful as a source. I would be very interested in using a firm from Oregon. We have a special landscape and special nuances. So we will, I'll be bringing that back to my board as soon as we've got some estimated costs, but they are, again, going to be ballpark figures. So that's where we stand with that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
Thank you.
You have a question?
One quick question for you. When we initially set up the ER rooms up at the, up at the Urgent Care here in Brookings, didn't we not have a feasibility survey done on that prior to that?
The only feasibility study that I'm aware of was commissioned by Curry Health Network as it was evaluating building a new hospital, and that the USDA was under the impression that we were going to open that emergency room, and so it was wrapped into that study. But to my knowledge, I haven't seen a feasibility study on just a standalone emergency room. We have run in-depth financial analysis of that, but I don't know that we've ever commissioned anybody just to look at that.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was checking my mind on, and I wasn't really clear, it's been a while, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming and explaining, trying to, for the explanation, so.
Thank you.
I know it's a haunting task.
In touch.